The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 9th, 2025. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News, and tapped into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Hagel.
I will now call the roll. Mrs. Dalton?
Here.
Mrs. Granholm?
Here.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Malfetta? Mr. Otto?
Mr. Tor?
Yeah.
Mr. Valentino?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
And Mrs. On?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ms. Keller.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public session minutes of the January 6th, 2025 board meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll call the roll on the minutes. Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Granholm?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
And Mrs. On?
Yes.
Minutes past seven zero.
Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mrs. On. Nothing to report in correspondence. In the Hib report, there were two investigations, both at Mount Horrib School. One was confirmed, one was not, and nothing to report in the suspensions tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Good evening and welcome to the January 27th meeting of the Warren Board of Education. Just a quick couple of comments appearing on tonight's agenda as C4. The board will be approving the retirement of three long-serving members of the district. We are really very blessed that we have so many professionals in our district that have served here decade over decade. So with congratulations, best wishes, and some regret, we will be saying at the end of the year goodbye to Dr. Cooper, who has served since 1997, and that's 28 years by my count. Ms. LeBlond, who has served in our district since 2001 for 24 years, and Ms. Lathrop, who has served in the district since 2007, 18 years. We wish them all the very best and congratulations as they enter into retirement. Also appearing on tonight's agenda as C5, we have reason to offer congratulations to some of our other staff members who are advancing on the guide. This is one of two opportunities in the course of the year where staff members are given the opportunity to advance on the guide as they demonstrate their continued commitment to their professional growth in education. So congratulations to Ms. Middleton, Ms. Scalia, Ms. Glenn, Ms. Shealy, and Ms. Carroll. Again, the district is very fortunate to have the high-quality, long-serving staff that teach our children and serve the members of our district. And with that, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mrs. On. I just have one thing for this section tonight, which is if I could read a resolution from the State of New Jersey Board of Education, which was in honor of New Jersey School Board Recognition Month, which is January. Whereas the New Jersey State Board of Education has established rigorous standards through its promulgation of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which set the expectations of academic achievement for nearly 1.4 million public schoolchildren. And whereas New Jersey's locally elected and appointed boards of education play a vital role in ensuring that their local school districts meet state standards and adhere to state and federal education statute and regulations with the goal of preparing all students for college in the workplace, thereby enabling them to compete in a global economy. And whereas New Jersey's 5,000 nonpartisan local Board of Education members and charter school trustees are public servants who dedicate their time without pay or benefit to the oversight of school district operations through sound financial practices and comprehensive policies on curriculum, staffing, and other areas to ensure the well-being and academic achievement of all students in the district. It goes on to recognize that it's the efforts of local school board members, like R9 here in Warren, that are what bring to life the state's aspirations in education. And so, joining Acting Commissioner Kevin Deemer, I thank all the members of the Warren Township Board of Education. It is truly, in many ways, a thankless volunteer job in some cases, but hopefully you all know how appreciated you are by the administration and by our staff and students and families.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to presentations, we do have a presentation of the audit report by Mr. Steve McDermott. Sir?
Good evening. Again, my name is Steve McDermott. I'm the audit manager with Something Clooney and Company, responsible for the 2024 fiscal year audit. We completed a majority of the fieldwork back in August, but there were some loose ends that got tied up in December, and we were able to issue our report. It was just before the last board meeting, so we couldn't make that one, but that's why we scheduled it for tonight. As part of our audit, we released two reports, one of them being the ACV, or the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That would be the larger report, if you had the hard copies. It contains the financial statements, the audit opinion, the notes to the financial statement, and the statistical section. We also put out the AMR, or Auditor's Management Report, and this contains our findings, if there were any, on different areas of compliance, such as administrative practices, purchasing programs, food service, the application for state aid, student activities, transportation, capital assets, and all the different areas the Department of Education requires us to comment on. It's a fairly short presentation tonight because the findings or recommendations are none. There were no material adjustments or significant findings that are reported, and the audit opinion is unmodified, which is the kind of opinion that you definitely want. So I will move on to going over a brief summary of the fund balances. So your general fund is your main operating fund, and on the budgetary basis, the grand total of the fund balance was $11,095,943. And that appears in the Act for Exhibit C1, if you were to look at that. And the breakdown of that is your year-end encumbrances are $393,547. Your excess surplus resulting from the year of audit that will be used in fiscal year '26 is $586,000. Your excess surplus from the previous year fiscal year '23 that is being used in this year that we're currently in now is $585,000. Your restricted reserves, you have capital reserve of $6,959,315, a maintenance reserve of $118,800, emergency reserve of $11,659, and the unemployment reserve is $535,077. And then your unassigned fund balance, which is the maximum that you're allowed to have based on the state's calculation, is $1,906,544. I just want to go over a few things that are going to be changing in the government accounting world that would affect your reports in the coming years. So GASBY, which stands for the Government Accounting Standards Board, puts out their pronouncements periodically, and number 101 is being implemented in the year that we're in right now for the financial statements. And I'll just read their summary from GASBY. "The objective is to better meet the information needs of financial statement users by updating the recognition and measurement guidance for compensated absences." That would be your sick pay, your vacation pay, any pay that you're entitled to accrue of that nature. "The objective is to be achieved by aligning the recognition and measurement guidance under a unified model and by amending certain previously required disclosures." Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of guidance out there on that yet, so that'll be our new reason to delay things probably in the future, which is, unfortunately, the way things tend to go when we're waiting for guidance on changes from various departments. We also have, this is a little bit farther out, the single audit threshold will be changing for the fiscal year '26. The way the language puts it, it's effective for years beginning on or after October 1st, '24. The federal single audit threshold will increase from $750,000 to $1,000,000,000. And that is a federal regulation, but the state tends to follow suit with that. We don't have definitive word on that yet, but we do anticipate that the state would also go up to $1,000,000,000. And what that affects is how and how often and how we select individual grant programs for testing. You guys were above the threshold for federal the past couple of years with the COVID grants, but once those grants go away, there's a chance that you could dip back below the threshold, once the threshold goes up to $1,000,000,000,000. So it could affect you guys a little bit for the audit. So at this time, if you have any questions related to anything I said or anything that you've seen in the reports, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does any board member have any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDermott. Before the board moves on, though, I do want to call out our business office. Mr. Hagel and the business office staff to receive an audit report with no recommendations, completely unmodified, is your hard work. And we are very proud of you and very grateful. So, Mr. Hagel, I hope you share this with your staff. And I see Mr. Malfetta wants to join me.
I second.
There we are. Exactly the kind of audit report we love sitting through. So thank you, Mr. McDermott. Thank you, Mr. Hagel. Thank you, business office staff. A lot of hard work goes into that.
I'll second that and just say, it's always a pleasure to work here. The staff is great to work with. Even though there's usually a few loose ends that take us into the winter months, when we're here in the summer, everything really goes smoothly, so we appreciate that very much.
Okay, I love hearing that. That's great.
And I'll let them all know that first thing tomorrow morning.
Yeah, please do. Have them look at this part of the video maybe, and how much the board appreciates them.
All right. Have a good night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pardon me. Will we wait for Mr. Hagel to return?
I'm sorry?
We'll wait for Mr. Hagel to find his seat again. No, it's quite all right. We can be a little loose, a little bit. Okay, so we're going to move on to the board's discussion item. Annually, the Warren Board reviews, discusses, and reapproves its board norms of communication and operations. These norms are unique to the Warren Board and in fact have acted as a model to other districts who have sought to establish similar standards. The purpose of the norms is to ensure effective governance and decision-making, ensure transparency to the public and to each other, and to provide the administration and experts who advise the board an opportunity to adequately prepare information for board and community members. This is when the board is most effective, when every member has the same information and the time to prepare, whether it's by reading that information, asking questions, undertaking additional reflection or research, when the administration has the opportunity to gather relevant district-wide information and/or outside expert advice, and when the public has been given adequate notice on our agendas of possible board action or discussion on a given topic. We avoid, whenever possible, bringing any matter to a board vote that has not enjoyed this level of preparation and discussion. Unique to Warren is our commitment to use of our committees as an effective way of organizing the work of the board and acting efficiently, but also with complete transparency to all board members. Committees only take up topics that have been delegated to it by the whole board, and each committee agenda is circulated to the whole board in advance of any committee meeting. This allows all board members to be equally informed about topics and supporting information being discussed at the committee level. Each board member can rely on the chairperson to limit committee work to items that have been noticed in this way. To ensure this level of transparency and efficiency, we ask that each board member abide by the flow of information detailed in the norms regarding committee meeting agenda, meeting expectations, and communication. The norms also address communication between members at board meetings. The goal, again, is to give every board member the opportunity to be adequately prepared and heard on any topic before the board for discussion. We always treat each other with respect and with the goal of acting in the best interest of the district and our constituents. To ensure transparency, efficiency, and mutual respect among board members, we ask that each board member abide by the norms as they relate to the conduct of board meetings. Finally, to ensure that every board member's concerns receive due attention, we ask that board members abide by the norms as it relates to raising issues for inclusion in committee and board agendas. Again, we want to make sure that members, and very importantly, the public, all receive adequate notice of board discussion and actions. And I prepared that overview in part just because that allows all of us to kind of know what we're talking about, but also sometimes I don't think the public knows how unique the Warren Board is in our board norms of communication. I have been approached myself by representatives of other boards who have come to us and asked, can you share that with us? Something that we can model. A prior president of the Board of Education actually did a presentation of this with Dr. Mingle at the New Jersey School Board Association Annual Meeting, their big convention. So this is unique. It's special, and we revisit it every year. And this is an, that is this opportunity to do that. So with that kind of overview, I'm going to ask if any board member wants to discuss any changes, anything you'd like to bring up with regard to these board norms. Nope. Okay, these will appear on the agenda for the board's readoption, I believe, the next agenda. Okay, fabulous. Thank you very much. Moving on to committee reports, Curriculum and Technology Committee, Mr. Tor.
So the Curriculum Committee met on the 21st of January to discuss Policy 5756 and next steps. Present were myself, Ms. Granholm, Mr. Malfetta, Ms. Keller, Mr. Kimmich, and Dr. Mingle. The discussion focused on the proposal the whole board received regarding the abolition of the policy and was further informed by advice from outside counsel. With these resources and reference points and through the discussion, the Curriculum Committee concluded the following. "The committee and board will need to relook at the policy. At this time, though, we should not use board and district resources to do so until the ongoing cases have concluded and judgments have been issued. Doing this enables the committee and the board to have a fully informed discussion and develop policy with all the necessary information to hand. To do so immediately invites a number of risks, and the revised policy will quickly become obsolete and again need revising. The Curriculum Committee discussed and reiterated the board's harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy remains in effect and protects students from actions that may cause them to feel unsafe, demeaned, or harmed. In the interim, the administration will address and manage each situation that arises case by case using the full range of policies at their disposal. So at this time, no other action is required by the Curriculum Committee or the board."
Thank you, Mr. Tor. Finance Operations and Security Committee met January 24th with all members present. We did have our first responders go off to save some lives in the middle. No? Oh my goodness, it was a false.
That's good.
It's very good.
Even as a housekeeper.
It.
That's all we got up to best.
Yeah, oh my goodness, yes. So I will admit that the Finance Committee lost our two heroes in the middle of the meeting, but it was a fairly short meeting anyway. The, we are at the beginning of the, we're at the beginning of the calendar year, but not at the beginning of the budget process. We are deeply in the middle of it. At this stage, as is customary every January, we get the newly formed committee all sorted out with all the links and information. This year, fortunately, our committee is the same, is constituted the same as it was last year. So most of this was familiar to us as we looked at getting ourselves ready for the next meeting, which will be a big one. So we did discuss the budget process and key budget drivers, and Mr. Hagel reviewed budget information with the committee and the fact that, you know, what are the most significant budget drivers, which would be the five-year capital plan, as well as the health insurance that we pay for our employees and the employees participate in. The next meeting, Mr. Hagel is going to continue to provide scenarios to the committee for review regarding potential state aid levels and how that will affect the overall budget and tax levy. So the next meeting's likely to be one of our longest ones. At this meeting, budget buddies were assigned. This is, again, something that's unique to the Warren District, that we do provide budget buddies from the Finance Committee out to the rest of the board members, and this is a part of our process of making sure that all board members, including those who don't sit on the committee, have access to detailed information about all the spreadsheets and information that the committee works with. And we took a look at the communications plan for the March 2025 referendum. Reminder, on the 11th of March, we will be going to the ballot box with a referendum. That communication plan is already in place. We have board members that will be attending functions at our various schools, one of which has already taken place, and that will continue through February up to March. Dr. Mingle, Mr. Hagel, and myself will be appearing on the 20th of February at the town committee meeting to do a presentation on the referendum and to answer questions that might arise then. So this is an ongoing conversation, and information can be found on the schools' district's website as well. The committee then did go over the committee description, which appears on tonight as B11 for approval, and made some small changes to the description. We've added in a point which reflects that the committee will be working on facility plans that meet the needs for community growth. And that's it for finance. We do not have a readout for personnel negotiations and communication this evening, so ad hoc strategic plan, Ms. Keller.
The Ad Hoc Strategic Planning Committee met on January 10th. We discussed findings to the community survey, and we discussed some of the draft priorities that were coming out of all of the data that's been collected thus far from the different workshops, survey itself. And then we discussed a plan for the third engineering team session, which happened on January 15. I wanted to take a minute to talk about some of the, I won't say highlights, but some of the insights that I thought would be helpful for the community at large to understand things that I thought would be helpful or interesting about what information they gave to us in terms of their responses. So we actually had 500 people, precisely 500 people, take the survey. So thank you to everybody who took the time to do it. It was a mix of parents of students who are currently in the schools, parents, alumni parents of those who have graduated, moved on, community members as well, and staff. The data was shared in the last community briefing to the school community, but I thought this would be a good opportunity in this readout to cover a couple of those highlights. There was a lot of qualitative insights that came out of it. So what was shared in the community briefing was a mix of sort of the priorities and the summary qualitative comments. I think there was 50 pages of open-ended data that we got back from those 500 people. And then there was the quantitative findings as well. So I wanted to share some of the easier, more digestible stuff here, not the open-ended feedback. Just note, because I'm kind of a data analytics nerd, I want to be clear, this is not every single 500 people answered these questions. So it was a subset. Not everybody could skip questions if it wasn't relevant for them, so full transparency. So we asked participants to prioritize the top academic programs and offerings that they wanted to see Warren offer. So STEAM and Core Academics, reading, writing, and math, were definitely got, were the two highest priority items. SEL, which is Social Emotional Skills, came in third. And then that was followed closely by Visual Performing Arts, enrichment courses, and early childhood education. So in terms of where sort of people saw the priorities in terms of programming academics, that's what the insight showed from the quantitative survey. We asked people to prioritize the allocation of financial resources. So where would they, you know, if they were given the budget, what would they do with it, right? So there were 10 options that people could prioritize. Academic programs slash curriculum was the most prioritized. So that was definitely came in first by a fair amount. It was followed by security and technology slash infrastructure. Those were pretty equal. The fourth and fifth most prioritized were social emotional needs and keeping class sizes small. To that end, we specifically wanted to gather feedback and insights about how the community felt about small class sizes. As you, many of you know, that has been a priority over the years. The community has said that they feel that that is important to academic excellence and was a priority for the school. So we wanted to see and validate, is that still the case? So we explicitly asked about the importance of small class sizes to the quality of education. And 92% responded that it was very important or extremely important. And lastly, we asked about how important quality schools are to property values. And about 97% indicated a lot or a great deal of importance. So those are some highlights. There's a lot more data to be shared. And we are having two more engineering sessions, and the next one is on February 10.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. At this time, we will go to the first of two opportunities for public commentary. I ask that anyone interested in addressing the board, please raise their hand or use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address and by directing your comments to the presiding officer. That would be me. Please know that the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Public commentary is intended as an opportunity for the board to receive such input, but is not intended as a Q&amp;A session. Following public commentary, if appropriate, the presiding officer or the superintendent may provide some response. For this first opportunity, we ask that your comments be limited to items that appear on tonight's agenda. There will be a second comment opportunity for all other comments later in the meeting. So at this time, looking to the audience. Seeing none, looking to Zoom, Ms. Andrews.
If you want to look at me and how beautiful I look. Hi, this is Nancy Andrews. I am the president of the Warren Township Education Association, and I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of the entire union to extend our sincerest congratulations to our retiring colleagues, Dr. Cooper, Mrs. LeBlonde, and Ms. Lathrop. Your dedication and hard work have been invaluable to the school district as well as to the staff and students of Warren, and we just wish you all the very best in your well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Do we have anyone else in our Zoom audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close public commentary?
Motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? The first opportunity for public commentary is now closed. Dr. Mingle, items for board consideration and action.
Thank you. Just three quick comments. They're all on items in the B, Finance Operations and Transportation section. The first one is B7. We've talked about this here before, but I just wanted to point out the first year of our second-grade swim program. This is an optional program for children in second grade. It's a water safety partnership with the Somerset County YMCA. Sorry, the Greater Somerset County YMCA. It's the Basking Ridge location. We have about 40 families who have signed their children up for this, which will take place during the school day. We'll transport them and supervise. And we'll, we hope, make sure that every single young person in Warren has basic life safety skills for being in and around water, which is really important. Thank you to Mr. Kimmich, who's done the legwork on making that partnership happen. B8 is an updated contract with Alphabet. Many of you know Alphabet as our before-and-after care provider during the school year. Starting in summer 2025, they will also provide services during Summer Fun, which will give parents another option for additional enrichment. This program will, can be layered on top of our Summer Fun program so that children can be there later into the day for families who need that level of service. And really exciting, this program will include a field trip component so families who sign up for it, their kids can have enriching field trips after the Summer Fun morning. So that's a really nice new partnership with Alphabet. And finally, in B9, I just want to echo Mrs. On's congratulations to Mr. Hagel and his team on their successful audit.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Would any member of the board like to pull any item for board consideration for a separate voter discussion? I am going to pull one thing relating to policies before we go to a vote. There is a policy that came to us, a full review, that does not appear on tonight's agenda for a first reading. It was a policy. It was a policy entitled Acceptable Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence. This policy is not a mandatory policy. It's optional, and it was written by Strauss Esme from scratch. I believe probably to respond to inquiries coming in from various school districts. Little history, back in 2018, the board undertook a great policy review. I think only Dr. Mingle and I were here for the great policy review. It was fun, was it fun? Literally, every single policy went through a committee process of review before adoption by the board. That was binders like this. We have many, many hundreds of policies, thousands and thousands of pages. They were bundled into groups and referred to committees for initial review. It took months. It's a very, very long process. Since that time, and with the hiring of Strauss Esme, policy revisions, both mandatory and optional, have gone through administrative review before coming to the board for a first and second reading before adoption. We do not currently have a rule regarding committee review of new policies in advance of going to the board. I don't really recall that we've had many instances like this where a policy is completely coming to us from scratch, and it's not a mandatory policy where we are responding to some sort of state action. We recently received this revised policy, a proposed policy, it's not revised, a proposed policy from Strauss Esme, which is brand new, not a revision of any current policy and which is not mandatory relating to the use of AI in our schools. So I am asking the board to consider whether, that the policy does not appear tonight, whether we would like the board to refer policies like this that have no precedent in our current policies and are not being driven by mandatory state action. Review, send this first to a relevant committee for a first reading before it comes to the board agenda. And for that reason, it doesn't appear tonight. So I'm seeking everyone's input on that.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So with that, I don't have anything further to say on policies. Ms. Keller?
Motion to approve items for board consideration, A1 through A3, B1 through B12, C1 through C10, and D1.
Motion.
Second?
All right, I will call the roll. This is on the entire consent agenda. Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Granholm?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Melfeta?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
This is on?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We do not have any unfinished business or new business on tonight's agenda. So moving to the second opportunity for public commentary. This opportunity is open to any topic you wish to raise to the board's attention. Again, I ask that you raise your hand or use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. Remember that comments are limited to three minutes, and please state your name and address before beginning. Seeing nobody in the room with us here, do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to address the board? Last chance. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close second opportunity for public commentary?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The second opportunity for public commentary is now closed. Ms. Keller?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.